Okay, we're gonna call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to start off with the invocation. We have one of our very own, Mr. Michael Pinkston from the Christian School of Castle Hills here to lead us.
Council and citizens, let's pray together. So Father, we just invite you into this meeting and I want to thank you for each of the council members, Mayor Trevino and Ryan, the incredible agenda that they've put together. Just looking forward in an ambitious way for, in a forward-thinking way about our quality of life as a family of citizens in this community. And making this a better place, one step at a time, one meeting at a time. Thank you for the forward progress we've made. Pray that the vision that they would have for our city would continue to have the intent of good for every person who lives in this wonderful community. And I pray that you would return the blessing for the hard work in the, in the people on the city staff, the police and fire, the police force and the fire department. Obviously, all these volunteers who are here and just put your hand to protection over our community and bless it. Bless the kids and all the schools as they're going back to school and all their teachers and families. And may this be a year like none other in the city of Castle Hills. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Okay, now we're ready. And next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and it's gonna be Angelica Tyndall from the, she's an Eagle Scout with BSA troop, it's 573G. Oh, there you go.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to thank everyone here tonight for this opportunity to come and present my project, my Eagle Scout project was for the Presbyterian Church. It was a flag retirement box used for worn and torn old flags that can be placed in the box and to be retired in a respectful manner. This project was inspired because I am planning to join the Marine Corps. I leave for boot camp August 26th to hopefully earn the title of the United States Marine. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tyndall, for being here and for your service to our community. Next up, we have a recognition of one of our very own, Mr. Al Peralas. Mr. Peralas is new to Castle Hills and he came to Castle Hills bearing gifts most recently through his company. And we'll have you come up and tell a little bit about it, but donated a massive amount of hand sanitizer that we've been able to spread throughout the community, especially as we're getting into flu season and make sure that we're keeping everybody safe. Mr. Peralas, if you want to make some comments, we'd be happy to have you. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, maybe not. My name is Al Peralas and I'm with the, with the working with the off the line, blind. I'm actually retired, I retired in 2000 from Microsoft. And, uh, in mind, we used to work San Antonio, Goodwill, at the Goodhouse in Austin. So I go two, three days a week, it's a long drive, believe me. But we, uh, we had a lot of wanted people, 289 are blind visually impaired. And, uh, we, my job is to get them to do things inside people who do. And so I looked at it as, you know, they could do everything we could do but seek. So I have two ultra qualified blind portlets driving that. I have blind programmers that do the drones on a line and awareness. And I also have blind robot programmers. And, um, the good news is that they learn a skill that's transferable and watching the community. The bad news is that companies can hire you. Uh, companies actually could give that permission, they often learn, get qualified on something and then go out in the real world and not, uh, they call up and text them. But anyway, I, we made, uh, the third largest contributor, a dollar, a pure all hemoglobinizer and goes up so. And the army had ordered a bunch from us and then thank God we're no longer at war after 20 years. So they, uh, said we could do what we wanted with, uh, I think it's like 200,000 cases. And I donate 124, I believe it was. So thank you for recognizing us and for, uh, my time. Thank you.
I also wanted to thank Ms. Haley and one of our other residents, Dr. Mike Flynn, for going up there to Austin and bringing the package back to Castle Hills.
At pickup, we'll travel and I want to add one thing. What really made a, a big impression on me was that Al called and said, I want to do something to help my city. And he did. So we appreciate that, that, that thought that came from you, Al, and a lot of people benefited from it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Rapley.
Uh, Mayor and Council, on the, on the agenda, we have a passport fair, but I'd also, before the passport fair and discuss that, I'd like to introduce a new employee, Ms. Rosario Quintero. So, yeah, say a few words for her. So, uh, Rosario started with us on Monday, July 15th. Uh, she has served as a, previously with the city of Lidl for a few years as the permit clerk there, Assistant City Secretary. Uh, during the process, we had several, uh, applications, however, based on Ms. Quintero's, uh, experience qualifications, she was the best candidate for the position. She's been working with us for a few weeks now and has been a great addition to our city permit office. So, thank you, Rosario, and hope you met all of our council members as well. Thank you. Uh, real quick, Mayor and Council, um, the passport fair that we held, um, I wanted to start by saying I wanted to recognize our employees and volunteers who recently worked at the passport fair. It was held month, uh, last month on Saturday, July 20th from 10:00 to 3:00 PM. However, due to the demand, the number of applications being processed, uh, staff was there until past 6:00 PM that day. Um, I wanted to recognize Ms. Nora Davis, Ms. Jeanette Ulmer, and Stephen Moreno, who processed the applications at the fair. I also want to acknowledge Judy Crawford, um, Ms. Melissa McGuire and Kathy Friedicks, who volunteered their time to facilitate the applicants. Uh, with, you know, providing them a number and then, you know, helping facilitate to each one that opened up for processing their passport, guide them, uh, to getting that done. I'd also like to recognize Valerie Val Medeline from our police department who assisted that day as well. Staff processed over 115 passport applications on this day and it brought in a revenue of about 3,500 on this day. And real quick, I just wanted to, I got with, with Nora and wanted to give the big picture to you all because, you know, since 2018, the city has processed over 4,200 applications. Bringing in a revenue stream which averages about 30,000 each year and since 2018 has brought in revenue of over 150,000 to the city's general fund. Uh, we projected another 30,000 this year for the FY 2025 budget. Ms. Davis, Ms. Ulmer, Mr. Moreno, process applications by appointment only on a daily basis with some appointments on Saturday. These three employees process applications along with their other duties assigned in their capacity with the city of Castle Hills. Um, over the years, I've heard nothing but positive compliments about our passport office. Uh, our passport office provides a unique service, especially being a suburban city on the north side. We're, we're the only ones in the area that do this. I'd have to say I go to my regional city manager monthly meetings and they ask me how that passport's gone and I go, I wouldn't look into it, you know what I mean? But, uh, uh, we definitely, um, get flooded with calls for appointments because, uh, it's, um, we've heard nothing but compliments about coming here and getting applications processed by our employees. Versus having to go downtown or even the post office. So, um, I appreciate Ms. Davis who oversees that, uh, area of the passport. And, um, I think it's, it's a great opportunity for our residents and anyone in the area who, um, can make time to. Come, thank you. Oh, uh, sorry. We have another passport fair on November 2nd. So we'll put out information as well. Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Ms. Quintero, welcome to Castle Hills. Hopefully you're enjoying it so far. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. Uh, we have Mr. Frank Paul. If you can, uh, your name and address and you have three minutes, Mr. Paul. Your, your time doesn't start till you get there. You're good.
Let me take count first, based upon the last meeting. I want to make sure we got one, two, three, four, five. It's good to see that all five council members did not find the need to resign. I'm sure that, uh, they gave a serious consideration based on the comments of a few people that visited us. I know we have a couple of them here tonight, but that's okay. I'd like to comment on that. I was out of town and I know how it is to be up there. You have to sit there and listen, bite your tongue. And, uh, the only one that journeyed to get some trouble up there was me and Mr. Snoll journey brought me back and made sure I was in line. Three came from Leon Valley to share their thoughts on what they thought has recently, the city has recently been through on the Sylvia Gonzalez case. Now I will share my thoughts on their thoughts. The Supreme Court did in fact decide on the process and whether Mrs. Gonzalez can sue the city. The city found in favor, the court found in favor of her right to do so. Nothing was decided on the merits of the case that was not presented. In my opinion, several implications were made that I thought were totally out of line and inappropriate. Which tells me the parties knew nothing and know nothing about really what went on. So for what purpose and why did they feel compelled to come and talk? Was it because they had issues in their own city and just wanted to come and imply that our city does not know what we are doing? Whichever, I believe they failed on all counts, on all counts. Again, the question to me is why? It was implied that our city leadership was tight and maybe kept others from participating. We have open elections and yes, there may be favorites, but the elections still take place. It was also implied that the city discourages citizens from coming and speaking to council. Well, here I am. The ladies that were mentioned as possibly being wronged by the city were in fact those that caused much discord for the city in 2019. At the June 11th meeting, 2019, I seem to remember these things. The two ladies decided they wanted to limit who could talk at the city council meetings. There was an agenda put forth by Ms. Winger and Ms. Gonzalez that said you had to get permission from council to speak. And generally on the items after they had already been processed and it was at the end. So who really tried to or tried to keep people from speaking? These, fortunately, I just got a couple more. Fortunately, for the city and for the citizens, the state in September of 2019 passed a law, went into effect and said, there's no way that can happen. So we were back giving our opinion at council. It was also implied that the city may have altered facts on the city website. By doing so, in my opinion, that was questioned in the private investigator that put them there. Really? This then says that the city has lack of transparency.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
We're over your three minutes.
Okay. I just want to say that the city has no lack of transparency and for some reason, if they did, we have the best city attorney in the city. And he would hold us accountable and stop us and make sure we have transparency and, uh, I welcome any other thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Next up, we have Mr. Wayne Carter. Uh, your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Wayne Carter. I reside at 125 South Winston Lane. I have two topics. First of all, believe it or not, one year, one year ago in August, I came before you to give a petition for some type of traffic calming features to be considered on Winston Lane and, and West Castle Lane. I have been updated by the city manager and I do appreciate that very much and I pass it on to our residents. Bear in mind, 80% of the residents that live on South Winston Lane and West Castle Lane, 80% signed the petition. Maybe I could have gotten 100, but it was a 100-degree day in August when I walked and I just stopped. So when the study comes forth, I hope it leans away from what we did some time ago and that's to put a radar trailer out there on Winston Lane. And even Assistant Police Chief Wayne Waggoner said, you know, it skewed it a little bit because you see the, whoa, slow down, okay. We have posted 25 mile per hour speed limit signs on our streets. I had a video that I showed Captain Waggoner of a lady doing 56 miles an hour down Winston Lane, 56 miles an hour. So whenever this comes up, I hope you do consider it. I, I know you'll have to take the recommendations of the, of the traffic engineering, but if, if they skew it the wrong way, I think all of us citizens are going to come up here. Secondly, I'm here on behalf to express gratitude for one of my longtime high school fraternity brothers, St. Mary University friends, Art and Sandy Galvan. Sandy was involved in a major traffic accident at the intersection of, um, West Avenue and Military Highway back in June. She called us, Art and I were together, she called us and when we got there, our fire department and police department had half of that intersection locked down. Guiding traffic through, trying to keep it open, at the same time trying to attend to the victims. Sandy was in, in bad shape and it was a 100-degree day, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And our first responders did a excellent, awesome job. And Art and Sandy wanted me to relay that. And secondly, Art and I parked in the CBC parking lot. We got across the street to go over there with the pedestrian, uh, signals. But on our way back, they wouldn't work. We couldn't get back across. We sat there for like 15 minutes and I would like to commend, uh, patrol lady Leandro. She put us in her squad car and took us across and I hope that's the last time I'm in a squad car in the back. I'm six foot three and I'd fit in there this way. But anyway, she did an excellent job and I want to commend our first responders, Art and Sandy. Thank you from the bottom of their heart. Thank you, Mayor. And also thanks to our public works director, Rick. I love him.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And next up, we have Carolyn Hyberg. I'm sorry if I said that wrong. Yeah, your name and address and you have three minutes.
My name is Caroline Hyberg.
You can pull the, the mic down. There you go.
My name is Caroline Hyberg. That was right, actually. I'm here with Covenant Presbyterian. Um, we have a respite care program. That we would like to share with you, something that's impacted so many people. So I wanted to share the events that we'll be having this month on August 14th, that's just tomorrow, and August 28th. From 9:00 to 11:00, we're having senior day. Um, we're welcoming participants, volunteers and caregivers of loved ones with early to mid-stage dementia. Um, we'll be doing service projects and having socialization. So we hope, um, we have a lot of growth within the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Eric Mata. Your name and address and you have three minutes.
Eric Mata, I'm a resident of Leon Valley, who, uh, this gentleman just referred to, I was here, uh, I guess that was late June, early, early July. And yes, um, I would say, uh, I think as I expressed at that meeting we came to initially, um, when you've, you've seen how abusive government can be. And how abusive it can be towards its citizens. You become passionate about holding government accountable. So I've done it in multiple places. So I'm not just picking on you guys. If you want to take it personal or if you, you want to have a member of your government club or someone that supports you come and speak out, that's, that's great. That's his right to, just as it's mine to come up here, whether I'm resident or not. Other thing I'd say is, uh, you know, there shouldn't be always this desire to shut down the dissident voice. You guys should, if anything, encourage the voice of dissension that comes up here and holds you accountable. It's the people that hold the power, not you. You're here as servants to work for the public. Um, and the reason I'm, I, I'm a little upset about that is, you know, after that meeting, I reached out to some people. Um, people that didn't know me and people that, uh, were willing to share their stories. And there is a lot of fear in this city about what you guys did a couple of years ago. I don't know, some of you guys were not seated obviously on council, but some of you were and you know who you were. Um, and you, you know who you are. So, you know, it was surprising and it's nice to see more people here, but certainly it was surprising to see such few people here after such a, a momentous occasion like that. And certainly it was not on the, uh, it wasn't a case on the, on the core of the matter. But it, it definitely gives me hope that Mrs. Gonzalez will have her day to be heard. And, um, the other thing I'd say is, um, yeah. I think it's, it's interesting that a city like this, who seemingly seems to be functional, is so quick to sweep something like this under the carpet. I think it says a lot about this situation. And again, I'll point to the fact sheet that's on your website about this situation. Um, I think you guys should be nervous. I think you should be concerned for your city. And I think you should tread very carefully and remember, one thing that I think we've learned through what we've gone through in Leon Valley and what I've seen in other municipalities that had dysfunction. Is that, yes, the municipal attorneys very much were at the heart of the dysfunction. There's no doubt that they profit off of the dysfunction, gives them more hours and they certainly use it. So I would caution you guys to always understand, if you have good instincts, trust yourself. Attorneys are there to advise you. It doesn't mean what they say is the letter of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mata. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, I have a couple of changes on the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
That I have placed there on the dais for you. On June 26th, page two. On 6.2, phase six, I changed that to May of 2025. I believe it said May of 24. And then on the July 9th minutes. On page four, there was just a couple of items that I wanted to remove. It was a little redundant. So I will ask council to approve those with the changes made.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. May.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the pronounced changes orally.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second, Ms. Danes? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Okay, first item, new business, discussion and possible action on a proposed tax rate for year 2024. We're gonna take a record vote and schedule a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I think merits should be loaded under there. Or maybe you have to go to the desktops or.
Which one of these is it, Mr. Rapley?
It's a FY 24 tax rate.
Am I missing? I'm sorry. Okay.
All right, Mayor and Council, this item is for our tax rate, uh, proposed tax rate for our FY 25 budget. Um, real quick, I'll go through a few slides here. This is the timeline here. Uh, tax rate calculations were received. Uh, we had submitted to you on the August 2nd for review. Tonight, we're here to discuss that tax rate, uh, select the proposed rate and then schedule the public hearing. We have the 21st is what we will publish, the notice. And then the fourth will actually hold the public hearings to adopt, excuse me, will hold the public hearings in order to adopt the budget and the tax rate. And then September 10th, we'll adopt the budget and tax rate. Next slide, Mayor. This slide is an overview of an explanation of the different rates, uh, the no new revenue rate, the voter approval, the minimus. And then an explanation of what the minimus is, a taxing unit with no new revenue maintenance and operations rate. And then the rate that when it applies to a taxing current total value will impose amount of taxes equal to 500,000 or below. And then tax, tax increase elections for taxing units are calculated minus, depend on whether the opted rate is greater than or less than the voter approval and the de minimis rate itself. Next slide, Mayor. The tax rates are comprised of the two components, the M and O, maintenance and operations, and then interest and sinking, since we have taken on, uh, COs and debt in 2023. Uh, we have now an INS portion. The city currently has debt obligations to pay through property taxes. The current tax rate is comprised entirely of maintenance with an interest and sinking tax rate. And when we issued the certificates of obligations to pay for streets, the portion comes from property taxes, which created that INS rate. Next slide, Mayor. As as demonstrated on the chart below, which includes the INS, the funds, uh, to pay the city debt, the total proposed tax will decrease actually by point 002997 from tax year 2023. The M and O tax rate, which funds the functions of the general fund, will go up by point 0009067. Now for a total, and actually the INS will go down that point 10 to have an overall reduction of the point 0027. So if you look in the column to the left under 23 adopted, our current tax rate is point 543658. So what we're proposing for 2024 is actually a slight decrease, 0.540661, which is that difference of point 00297. Uh, the INS obviously dropped. We wouldn't be using any tax increments as a result of this proposed rate. And then of course, the adopted on the M and O was point 473. That actually changed slightly, point 4525. But overall, it is a slight decrease in the total tax rate as it compares to our current budget and our current tax rate. Next slide, Mayor. So the no new revenue rate is the point 533456. Um, and then the voter approval is the point 540661. Which is below than our current property tax right now. If we go above that, uh, Mr. Snoll will tell you that we'll have to put it on a ballot and go to the voters above that. Uh, the estimated revenue from the collection is 4,322,298. Right now, I have in the proposed budget slightly less, um, and that was based on myself submitting the proposed budget. That was a result of Ms. Wallace and Ms. Davis looking at, uh, what the potential threshold of a 97, 98% collection rate was. And use that as a gauge for putting together the proposed budget. Uh, and we'll get further down on the next agenda item as we move forward. Uh, the difference between no new revenue rate and, uh, VA tax rate is the point 007205. Next slide, Mayor. So we see the appraisals last year, the 24, it was 424,0651 was the average home value. And then in 25, the appraisals came in at 439,591, which is the difference of the 14,00940. So the voter approval rate of 24 versus 25 is a difference of about $68. Next slide, Mayor. So for this proposed budget, we are recommending, uh, the tax rate of point 0540661, which is 002997 lower than the adopted 2023 tax rate, a point 543658. So what we'll need to do is obviously hold a public hearing, publish the notice for the public hearing, and then, uh, move forward with adoption. So for tonight, um, y'all would need to take a record vote on the recommended tax rate and then call for the date of the public hearing for the tax rate itself. So, and, um, open any questions? I want to thank Ms. Wallace, Ms. Davis for the help on this. They were, uh, instrumental in, in putting this together with me as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Counsel, comments, questions, motions? Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Rapley, at that recommended tax rate, can we get everything done that we need to get done in our budget?
Yes, sir. And I will cover that in the budget. I think it's what at the next gen, not the next gen, but 6.8. Well, we'll talk about that and I'll talk about, uh, revenue collection, which will be gained as a result of this in the ad valorem collection, which goes directly into the general fund for, um, other, um, requests for departments, street dollars, those kind of things, anything within the general fund.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have a motion? Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I'm, I move that we accept the recommendation of Mr. Rapley and staff for the new voter approval tax rate of zero, of 0.540661, with a public hearing to be held on September 4th.
At 6:30.
6:30, uh, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley. This is a roll call vote. Uh, we'll have the city secretary call off the names and please vote accordingly.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Haley?
Yes.
Councilmember May?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Danes?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Schnall?
Just a reminder to the council, because the meeting on September 4th is a special meeting, the forum for that meeting is for members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next up, we have discussion, possible action on resolution 2024-08-13-A regarding first amendment to a ambulance service agreement between the city of Castle Hills and Acadian Ambulance Services. Chief.
Yes, um, the agreement between, um, Acadian Ambulance, who does our, uh, transport services for the city, was originally signed in 2009 and it was signed as a five-year document. Um, and then at the end of that five years, it was reviewed and as long as both parties, the city and Acadian, agreed to continue the services, it would, um, automatically be renewed every year on its anniversary date. Um, while that anniversary date is this coming October. And, um, speaking with Acadian, there was two amendments that they have wanted to include into the new agreement. And they presented that, um, I presented the, the new amendments to Mark Schnall and, um, we're presenting it to you today for, for your approval.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Rapley, any comments?
I know, Mayor Council. Mr. Schnall's reviewed it and, um, approved the amendment.
Thank you. Counsel, comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Joyce?
Chief, were the changes significant?
Uh, no, sir. Pretty much, uh, there was one, uh, amendment that was, uh, added that was not part of the original agreement, but it was in, uh, discussing the counterparts shall be added as follows. And it just describes how certain parts of the agreement can be approved and it still contain, it'll still hold the, the agreement as one whole part. Um, the other part was the section 15. Um, that section, there was very little change to it whatsoever from the original document.
I think the chief has described that correctly. The change in section 15, section 15 is the force majeure paragraph. It's a paragraph that has been in documents for dozens of years. Nobody ever read it until COVID. And then everybody read it because people used it to try to get insurance coverage and other benefits because of the disruption in our daily lives that, uh, COVID caused. Uh, the, the change that Acadian has asked is simply to make it clear that when there is an event that it's beyond the control of either party, that it, this force majeure paragraph will only be invoked if that unforeseen cause renders Acadian's performance of obligations to be unsafe. And they're in the ambulance business, so I can understand why they would want to make sure that they have some protection along that line. The other change, as the chief said, is to add a provision for counterparts. And that's another kind of standard clause that wasn't done dozens of years ago, but that is done now in almost every agreement. Because we're in San Antonio and Acadian's main office is not. So if this is approved, Mr. Rapley or the mayor, I think in this case, um, the mayor will sign this in St. Castle Hills. Acadian will sign it at its home office and copies will be exchanged by email. The counterparts paragraph ratifies that activity.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Counsel? Any more questions? Do we have a motion? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 2024-08-13-A as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Uh, Ms. Haley, thank you. Any more comments? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, next up, we have discussion, possible action on resolution number 2024-08-13-B, authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement with Texas Municipal League Joint Cyber Liability and Data Breach Response Self-Insurance Fund to, in regard to cyber liability and data breach response coverage for the city of Castle Hills. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is actually, uh, interlocal with TML for us to, excuse me, opt in to an agreement for cybersecurity. Um, I guess since 2016, um, all cities have been covered under cybersecurity threats. And so this is actually a fund through TML for direct cybersecurity coverage, uh, that we would be, um, be joining this fund with other cities as well. So. It's additional coverage, I believe, Ms. Davis, basically with TML, directly solely addressing any cyber threats we were to receive. So.
Thanks.
I'm confident, though, with our, um, IT security that we've spent a lot of money improving over the last few years, that, um, we're, we're in a good position, but additional coverage would help as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Counsel? Mr. Joyce?
Just a quick question. Is there any cost to this, Mr. Rapley?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is there any cost to this?
Um, I think we're going to get a rate, which will be plugged into the new proposed budget. It'll be a part of the, what we pay annually to TML. We'll have that soon. Is that what they had mentioned? Laura? Yeah.
Ms. Haley, microphone.
But we don't have a clue about what that is? An idea of what that will be?
You said, uh, 2,500 a year? For the year? Yes, ma'am.
But we have been doing this before, though, correct? So we have been paying some amount because it's, it, in the documents, it says that we are opting in and if we don't opt in, we'll be canceled. But we've been doing this in the past, correct?
Yes.
Creative fund. And so they can allow us better coverage or all the cities that are gonna join the fund.
Okay, so follow-up question, then we haven't been specifically paying like a $2,500 line item, but we will.
Right. It's included in our regular liability umbrella.
Okay.
That we have.
Okay, so this will be an additional cost, but it will cover us for cybersecurity, which obviously has become a really big issue.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt, uh, resolution number 2024-18-13B, authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Texas Municipal League Joint Cyber Liability and Data Breach Response Self-Insurance Fund in regard to cyber liability and data breach response coverage for the city of Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, second by Ms. Danes? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. And next up, we have a presentation and discussion on the installation of license plate readers throughout the city of Castle Hills. Uh, we've all seen some of the posts going on about, um, burglaries, uh, people going through cars, we're walking through neighborhoods, uh, once they've got into the city of Castle Hills. And so we've asked ourselves, what else can we do? Obviously, we can't have a police officer on every street. And so, uh, Chief Zuniga has taken the lead and brought forth an idea that we wanted to have a conversation about and determine if this is a fit for the city of Castle Hills. Chief?
Good evening, council members, mayor, citizen staff. Um, we also have, uh, Joseph, forgive me for not pronouncing it right, Napoleontano?
That was pretty darn close. That's right.
Uh, representative with Flock Safety. He'll be, uh, jump in whenever you want, uh, and here to answer any questions that you may have, uh, clarify anything that, uh, I don't touch on. Um, it's no secret that there's an increase in crimes, uh, suspicious activities, uh, constantly occurring as it, in the, and it's been asked on several occasions what the police department is doing to try to curtail this, this crime. We're always searching for ways to increase public safety and decrease crime. Ideas and suggestions are often submitted. And we take a look at these ideas and suggestions and dissect them and determine the pros and cons. We look at everything from, uh, speeders to burglars to porch pirates, et cetera. One product that we are researching is the use of LPRs or license plate readers. Uh, these units can be strategically placed around the city and, uh, in turn capture license plates and vehicle descriptions of the vehicle as it passes by. This information is in stored for predetermined amount of time where we, the police, can search for a specific vehicle if one is reported and we will provide with a, a specific license plate. Even a partial license plate can be searched. Conversely, if a vehicle that has already been entered by another, uh, entity or agency as a suspicious vehicle, we will then be alerted of that vehicle, uh, if it is in the area when it passes through one of these LPRs. And that'll cause us to respond and attempt to locate the vehicle. We'll also receive alerts of the vehicle that passes by the LPRs that may be stolen, uh, or has outstanding warrants if we upload, uh, that data. Another way that it helps is by providing a timestamp of when a vehicle, uh, may have been actually stolen, such as was the case last night. We had one stolen last night on Atwater. I've heard from some that this is intrusive and an invasion of privacy. Uh, that personal information is being stored and could be stolen from servers, et cetera. The only information that is stored is a vehicle license plate number and the description of the vehicle, such as a photo shot of the vehicle, nothing else. No facial shots are taken, no personal information is gathered. These units are fixed on a pole and aligned to capture vehicles that are traveling down the street where the LPR is placed. These are being used throughout the coun, uh, country and throughout Bear County. I believe that Joseph has some maps to, to illustrate some where some of these LPRs are located and are being used by both governmental and businesses alike, uh, all of which are gathering the information. Um, before moving to the pricing, uh, I'll let Joseph jump in and, uh, offer any, any input.
Sure, sure. I appreciate that, chief. And, um, thanks, council, mayor, everyone for, for having me here. I'm, I'm honored, honestly, uh, about the potential to partner with Castle Hills. And I've actually, I have a couple of slides that I will pull up and, um, share with you all just to shed some light on, on what Flock Safety is, touch on some of what, um, chief just talked about. And then, um, like chief mentioned, I can show you, um, some of our footprint in the area because frankly, we have a ton of different agencies that we work with throughout Texas. And that just, um, that large footprint, um, is very helpful for agencies in cities like Castle Hills. Um, so I will pull this up very quickly. Okay, are you all able to see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, awesome. So quick, quick recap on Flock Safety. This won't be death by PowerPoint. I want to be conscious of everyone's time. But, um, at Flock Safety, our mission is to eliminate crime. And we're humbly, we're doing pretty well at it. We were founded in 2017. Um, and currently 12% of all crimes in America are solved thanks to one of the LPR cameras, uh, that Flock Safety has, that Castle Hills is considering. And that equates to over 2,000 crimes a day solved, um, thanks to one of these Flock Safety cameras, again, that you all are considering. Um, something chief just mentioned that I want to just make sure I hammer home because look, you all, you all don't know me terribly well, obviously, but I am the last person that I know that would work for a company that collects big data on people. And I totally, totally understand that concern that you all have raised. Um, I'm really proud about how Flock Safety operates around this. So what we've come to understand through our partnerships with law enforcement is 75% of all crime involve a motor vehicle. So Flock Safety is literally, we're the best in the world at taking a picture of the back of a vehicle and capturing the license plate. As chief mentioned, we will never, ever collect any PII or personal identifiable information. Um, there will never be any facial recognition or anything of that matter. This is literally just a picture of the back of the vehicle and the license plates, for what it's worth, this isn't even considered private property anyway. Um, so that is what we're really good at. And, um, so I just wanted to touch on that because we do not collect any PII. We take all of the human bias out of this that, that can be out of it. And so because of that, and because of its highly effective and we have, um, again, no personal identifiable information that, that is collected, we have a 97% um, city council approval rate. And I just wanted to mention that cities that use Flock have a 70% reduction in crime. Um, Texas is awesome and I love working here because we have a lot of Flock Safety cameras in Texas. There are just about 11,600 LPR devices throughout Texas. I'm going to show you some other maps here in a second. Um, over 3,000 of them are privately owned cameras, meaning like businesses, shopping centers, um, HOA, things of that nature, and over 8,500 LPR cameras throughout Texas. And while I can't show you all exact locations and things like that, I just, I think some of these maps help put it in perspective. So these green icons that you're seeing, this is, um, yeah, let me get this out of the way. This is San Antonio here, and these green icons that you're seeing, uh, are all Flock Safety devices. And what this means for you all is if you're a bad actor, let's say a stolen vehicle, and it passes any Flock Safety camera, it is going to notify the nearest, it's going to notify the nearest officers at Castle Hills that there is a bad actor coming into Castle Hills. Um, what that looks like even a little more is these are all devices. You'll see Dallas, Austin, San Antonio, um, and Houston. And I just show that because again, all of this is communicating in real time with each other of bad actors. And the way we do that is we connect with the NCIC database, so the National Crime Database. So if there is an open investigation, um, an Amber Alert, a stolen vehicle, you have to be a, a bad actor. This isn't for people jaywalking, but a, as a bad actor passes the device, it's going to notify the, the folks of Castle Hills PD of that bad actor. Um, and I'll, I'll pause there and open it for questions, but, uh, I just wanted to touch on, on some of that.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. Uh, counsel? Have any questions? Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Napolitano, um, I believe you mentioned that you guys have been involved in helping with 70%, reducing 70% of crime. What was that 70%? Please refresh my memory on that.
Um, so.
You reduce, you reduce crime in the United States by 12%, right?
12% of all crime in the United. 12% of all crime in the United States is solved thanks to one of the Flock Safety cameras, yes. And that's that's over 2,000 a day. Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, so so essentially what you're providing is a network of cameras. It's just not a couple of cameras here in Castle Hills, wherever Chief decides it's best to put them. It's a network so that our guys can be alerted if there's a bad guy coming into Castle Hills.
That, that's a, yeah, that's a great way to put it because that the the network exactly is what's providing the value, especially when you think about, you know, transient crime or bad actors coming from Houston into Castle Hills. If you just have normal cameras, that's where they're falling short. Is there, there isn't enough technology in the world to tell you that a bad actor came from Houston and is now inside of Castle Hills. With our devices and especially our saturated footprint throughout Texas and the United States, by the way, that is at the heart of it, what helps eliminate the most crime is we are a real time information center for all of these police agencies that are using us. They they just historically have not had a great way to share real time information with each other, and that is what Flock Safety is equipping them to do.
Mr. Joyce, you good?
Thank you, yes.
Ms. Danes?
So I have a question. How are you, how does Flock get this information? Or is it, you said national crime something database? Is it, is it uploaded by individual police departments? Is it a national? I don't know. I guess just can you give me a little more information on on what gets put into the system?
Sure, sure. Yeah. So we sync up directly with the NCIC database. In short, that's the National Crime Database. So if there is a, an ongoing investigation or a criminal that is in that crime database, it will automatically be synced up in our cameras and alert the agencies of any of those bad actors in that database that pass the camera. So there isn't any like input that is needed there. We sync up directly with it, and it's basically mirrored onto our platform. And like, it works the same for what it's worth for Amber Alerts and Silver Alerts. If they're, if they're in that database and they pass one of our LPR cameras, the nearest agencies will be notified in real time. And then, you know, for for Castle Hills PD, let's say they don't have a license plate, or there's someone not in the National Crime Database. But, you know, they they have, maybe some citizens came forth and said, hey, I know it was a white Ford pickup truck with with a toolbox in the back. Well, now Chief has the ability to say, hey, Flock Safety cameras, I want to be notified anytime there's a white Ford pickup truck with a toolbox in the back. And that right there really makes a dent in clearance rates and solving crimes. And Chief can talk to that better than me. It sounds like there was just a stolen vehicle situation. But the the ability to alert in real time without even a license plate also is very helpful, especially for smaller agencies, which is, by the way, all I work with is agencies, basically 25 or less sworn all throughout Texas. Because these devices, they see the best ROI with these devices being those smaller agencies. Because these are, these are eyes out on the street that never sleep. They're totally solar powered. And again, Chief has strategically placed them at some of the major thoroughfares and areas throughout the city where he's deemed are going to have the best bang for your, their buck. And yeah, that that's how that would work. A long winded answer, and I'm happy to to clarify on anything.
Okay, I do, I'm gonna ask for one clarification. I apologize, but I'm very new to this. So for instance, if a car is stolen in a nearby, you know, neighborhood, even if it's inside the city of San Antonio and not Castle Hills, I mean, that's not in a national database. So how do, how do we know that a local car has been stolen and is now driving through Castle Hills?
So that would be that the agencies have the ability to communicate that now through what's called a hot list alert. So i- if someone said, hey, there is a, again, if a citizen told Chief that there was a stolen white pickup truck, the chief can now go in his system and say, I want the cameras to alert me of any white Ford pickup trucks that pass.
And if I can jump in, Chief, having been on my share of ride alongs, the MDT will, the computer the police officer has in the car, when they're running a license plate, for whatever reason, it will come up as stolen. And so I think it's utilizing the same database. Am I understanding this correctly?
Oh, we're using TCIC, and of course, they got NCIC as well. We're connected with DPS. But yeah, we're able to, and with through the MDT, we're able to capture more information than just the LPR, but we can use it jointly. But if, like Joseph said, if the vehicle's been reported stolen, say, out of San Antonio, it's already in the system. If it happens to pass through one of the LPRs here, then it should alert us that this is a stolen vehicle.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Napoleontano, I thank you for your presentation. But the question I have is, in order to find these bad actors, aren't we also reading the license plates of everybody else out there at the same time?
The, it will capture the vehicle fingerprint ID of every vehicle that passes it. Yep, it will have the, it'll take a picture of the back of the vehicle and tell you the make, the model of the vehicle, the color and the license plate number, and it will have that on every vehicle that passes it. And that is permanently deleted on a 30 day rolling basis.
Okay, on a 30 day basis?
Yes.
Okay, and this question is more for Chief Zuniga. Do you have any plans to put these in? I know our major thoroughfare through Castle Hills is TexDOT on Northwest Military. Have you looked at the agreement that TexDOT needs in order to put one of these cameras in the right away, if we're interested in doing that?
Yes, sir. We've already checked, and they they made us aware that we we need to enter an MOU with them as well because of that being a state highway. We're looking more in the residential, the lower areas, not so much the the highway. We'll look at, we'll analyze where, you know, the high crime areas are at, and that's where we're going to look at kind of placing cameras.
And just one last question. What roughly is the false positive rate that you have on these readers?
The false positive rate?
Oh, yeah, where somebody gets flagged as a bad actor and they're actually not, they're not the person you're looking for.
Oh, um, that's a, that's a great question. I can find a specific answer on that for you. What the cameras do, like if you look at the vehicle fingerprint ID, and if the computer is not 100% sure, let's say that it's a Ford make on a truck. If it's not 100% sure of that, there'll be an expla- a little icon that shows up saying, hey, I I'm not sure if this is Ford or not, basically. Yeah, and I, yeah, I could look into that. It's, it's well over 99%, but I can find an exact answer for you on the like analytics of if it's, if it's ever notified that someone is a bad actor when in fact they're not.
Okay, and just to reiterate, I want to confirm that the, the good actor data is permanently deleted on a 30 day basis. It's not kept on any databases you have. It's not, I know you don't sell to third parties. I've read that, and I appreciate that. I just don't, I just want to make sure that, you know, you, me, the council, your Aunt Mabel, who only drives to church on Sunday, their data isn't just sitting around somewhere permanently on somebody's database.
100%, and I I can appreciate that. And you're right, we don't sell to third parties, never will, and it's all permanently wiped out on a rolling 30 day basis. And and for what it's worth, we, during that 30 day period, it's stored on the the AWS cloud. It's the most secure, it's the most secure database there is. It's what like the CIA uses, for example. And it's all permanently wiped out every 30 days. And for what it's worth, Flock Safety, we will never have, we don't own any of that data. We can't even view any of those pictures or anything like that. That is for the police department. All we see on our side, this might be more than you need to know, but the the cameras basically phone home and tell us the health of the camera where, you know, God forbid, bad weather rolls through again, a hurricane or something, and knocks out one of the cameras. It will notify us of the life of the camera, and so Flock Safety will go out, get it back up and running and fix things. But as far as like access to your footage or anything like that, we'll never have it. And again, everything is absolutely permanently deleted on a 30 day rolling basis.
Thank you, Mr. Napoleontano. I appreciate it. And I will just ask that Mr. Schnell trust but verify thus, and we read the contract. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. How tall are these poles that the cameras are mounted on?
So in in most cases, it is a 10 foot tall DOT approved Flock Safety pole. So it's a 10 foot tall black pole. When you think about these things, think about basically the impact of a a street sign or a stop sign. So Flock Safety comes out to your location. We put the poles in the ground, a solar panel sits on top of that. It's about 10 feet in the air. And then the camera sits right under that solar panel, and the camera itself is about the size of a, I don't know, somewhere between a softball and a football. And yeah, so it's about 10 feet tall. We also, you know, we do have the ability, when when we're working with cameras and working with Chief on where to put things, we also have the ability to attach them to existing infrastructure in an effort to save on costs. And I heard you mention TexDOT. If and when we ever decide to put on there, you should also know that like Flock Safety, we we handle literally everything from install to ongoing maintenance to working with TexDOT and getting that installed with them and and that.
Great, thanks. Quick question for Chief. Chief, whatever equipment is going to be required by this system, do you have the space in your facility to handle it?
As far as the.
If there's monitors or or what, is there any?
No, this is, this is app driven, so it's you just literally log on to the internet, right?
Yeah, it's just, it's just web based. So all the officers and everyone will see it right on their laptops in their squad cars. They'll get push notifications on their cell phones if they want it and or emails, and it's just literally web based, like Chief said.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, do we have any, Ms. Haley?
So you can put Amber Alert and Silver Alerts and Gold Alerts? You enter that too, so that if somebody's, you're looking for someone that can be part of this? Is that?
You don't have to enter anything, but yes, it will alert you of Amber Alert victims as they pass the camera. Like if there is an active Amber Alert out and they pass one of these Flock Safety cameras, you can trust and know that all of Castle Hills PD will be notified of that in real time.
Any of that, okay.
Yep.
Mr. May, any questions?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple, Mr. Napoleontano, sorry. You said that the the police department is notified. Does this go to dispatch, or does it go to the office, to all the officers, MDTs, or how does that work?
It's how they want to set it up, but typically it'll go to all the officers. They'll get all notified in real time. And they can set it up where they get notified right in their squad car laptops, if they have them, or on their phones, or via email.
And it'll, it'll give them details as to what the bad actor is accused of, correct? So that they know if they're going after somebody that's stealing mail up as opposed to somebody that's a little bit more of a threat?
Yes, yeah. So they'll, they'll know what the, yeah, what the details of the of the crime are. Yeah, they'll have that on their alerts. And so, yeah, they'll have that. And this is just for the agency, like if, you know, if if other businesses or anything ever get at, ever want cameras, because they can use these too, they wouldn't get those kind of alerts for safety reasons, but the law, law enforcement absolutely will.
Do you have any other cities in our Bear County area that are utilizing your system?
Um, yeah, let me see here.
So the ones that were touched on earlier when we spoke was Windcrest has some, Bernie has them, Balcony Heights has a couple of them.
Yep, Balcony Heights. Yeah, those three I know for sure.
Selma, nothing like Oak.
Do you have any cities that have done the whole city?
Yes, full city coverage is is pretty common. Yeah, absolutely.
Could you send the list of a couple of those cities that have full city coverage to the chief?
Yeah, yeah, I can send you that and show you exactly how that works and what that comes with. Absolutely.
I'd be curious to talk to their leadership and see how it's affected the residents or or crime.
Absolutely. I can put you in touch. I'll put Chief in touch with those chiefs directly. I can, I can put together an email after this call.
Perfect. Counsel, any other questions before we hear the additional details? Like cost?
Yeah, we'll get to the good stuff now. Of course, the purchase and implementation and use of new equipment and products does not come without a price. If you look at the attachment that everybody should have been provided, it's broken down. What each unit should cost is $3,000 a unit. At a total, we're looking at just initially six, trying out six cameras for a total of 18,000 annually. And that covers the cost of any repairs, anything that's down, the system goes down, whatever, they'll they'll fix it. It's included. And initially, it'll be 20, 21,9, I believe is what it was. That's for the installation, the initial installation. Then after that, it'll be just the $18,000 a year. Where Flock Safety is is going to allow us to trial these for 60 days at no risk. If we decide that it's something that's beneficial to the city, then we can entertain in looking at, you know, the funding for that somehow or another.
Yes, and speaking to the chief, that we would kind of break it up between the police line item and the police general fund budget, and then the rest would come out of either the forfeiture or CCPD. So we could break it up if we move forward annually. So those will be the two part funding streams for these cameras moving forward. But for, after the demo period is over, we would plug the dollars into the new budget that we adopt in 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. I have one more quick question. If there is a camera that's stolen or damaged by a car that jumps a curb and hits it, who pays for that?
Joseph, if I'm not mistaken, that's covered under the $3,000.
So, yep, any, so the way it's written out are any acts of God are totally covered by Flock. So anything like weather related or anything like that would be covered by Flock. If it's vandalized or something of that nature, the idea is the cost is passed on to you and then passed on to the vandalizer. I've never seen it enforced, but we would, the way it's written out is we would charge you all if it was, you know, vandalized or hit by a car. And it's less than the install fee depending on on the damage. So it would be around 650 bucks or less to replace the camera if needed.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do we have any other questions for Chief or Mr. Napoleontano?
So at this time, Counsel, there's no action. If if it's something you did not want to move forward with, then it can be discussed the night we adopt the budget. And saying that we don't necessarily need that line item, or we can keep it in the budget. And by then, the chief and maybe Mr. No, sorry, Joseph, can come back and give an idea of what that 60 day period looked like and how effective it was for us.
Perfect.
If I can, real quick, just close. Should we decide that these are not a good fit for the city, then we simply let Flock Safety know that they're not good for us, and they'll come and remove and no questions asked. We have had an LPR in the city before. It was a mobile unit that was installed in a patrol unit. So that one roved around the city, capturing license plates, just like these would. And just keep in mind that it was just one unit working. This one, we're looking at six in a, in fixed, fixed locations. The only drawback with that mobile MDT is that it costs around $40,000 for that unit. And so they're, they're pretty pricey. That one, we recycled it, I think, two or three times out of different patrol cars over the fleet of the years, and it finally just crashed. So we just haven't visited, going back to that type of 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 system.
But Chief, and that one, we were responsible for syncing the database too, right?
That is correct, because with that one, we were uploading municipal court warrants. And so anytime that somebody, you know, if a vehicle passed by one of the MD, LPRs, it would flag us, say, this, this person has a possible warrant. And so we, it it did, it served really well.
Perfect. Well, Chief, I appreciate you going above and beyond and trying to figure out how we can do more and keep the city of Castle Hills safe. Mr. Napoleontano? Well, Chief, I appreciate you, uh, going above and beyond to try to figure out how we can do more and keep the city of Castle Hills safe. Mr. Napolitano?
I did want to just, um, interject real quickly, and I hope I'm not overstepping. I'm, I'm just passionate about this. You mentioned full city coverage, and I, I'm gonna, um, put Chief in touch with a bunch of agencies that have done that. But just something for you all to consider and chew on is, uh, Chief and I had agreed, uh, we are, we're doing a sixty-day totally free trial for you guys to try out Flock, and like Chief said, on day sixty, if you guys decide, no, this, there's just no ROI here, we're gonna go pick up the cameras free of charge and, and shake hands as friends. And if you do like it, your contract is gonna start on day sixty-one. So essentially you're getting sixty days for free, no matter what. And I, I say all that to say, if you're going to consider full city coverage, if, frankly, if I'm sitting in your chair, something I would do is do it during the trial period. That way, you know, you can try full city coverage free of charge. And, um, and if it doesn't work, then so be it. But if it does work, at least you, you have a system in there that works. I only say that because like I equate this to, you guys have a decent deployment plan out with these six cameras. Don't get me wrong. I think it's gonna do, uh, uh, make a big dent in crime. I'm very confident of it, or else we wouldn't have, have offered a free trial. However, I do equate it to like the, basically like think about it like putting, uh, alarms on all the doors of your house. If you did that, you'd put one on both side doors and the front door and the back door, where, you know, the last thing I want for you guys to do is leave a couple of side doors open and then wonder why the system isn't working like we said. So full city coverage would get you that gap, and we could do it in the trial period. And I'll shut up now because we can table that or discuss it later. I just wanted to mention it.
Better now than later. Thank you, Chief, and we, um, you good? Okay, we did have somebody sign up to speak on this agenda item, uh, Mr. William Bradshaw. Councilman William Bradshaw, yeah, your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Will Bradshaw from the city of Leon Valley. Hello, Mayor and Counsel. This, uh, technology, the cameras is, is really, uh, futuristic, right? It's, it's, um, state-of-the-art and it sounds great, be able to catch people stealing cars, Amber Alerts, all kinds of things that a lot of good can come of it. But i- i- it's so futuristic, reminds me of a couple of movies, um, the came to mind Enemy of the State, where talk cameras were used to target and catch political enemies. Minority Report, where, uh, a false, um, accusation was made of murder, which, uh, tried to track down and, and destroy the, the main character. And then even nineteen eighty-four, where it's the ultimate police state governing and controlling everything that we do. I know that seems far-fetched, but we say now that, oh, we're just collecting license plates. That's all it's collecting. On the presentation that was in the agenda packet, it says they're also looking at bumper stickers. You know, you mentioned the vehicle types and those type of things. There's identifiers. Uh, what if bumper stickers are deemed hate speech and they want to track down anybody that has a certain type of bumper sticker, supports a political candidate? What if there's another pandemic and we have lockdowns? And, uh, government decides, you know what, we can see if somebody is driving them and they're not supposed to be, and we can go and find them and, and stop them. What if, uh, in the future, and I'm not saying this, this council would do it, or this Chief of Police, in the future, somebody comes and says, you know what, uh, we want to track people's carbon footprint, and we see that they're driving around too many miles during the day, uh, they're not even going to the grocery store. They're just taking a Saturday drive, and that shouldn't be allowed. So let's enforce that. And I know it sounds silly. It sounds like, no, that's not gonna happen. That can't happen here. But this is the first step. You know, you start putting in these controlling, uh, devices. It's the first step to limiting freedom. And if you don't believe it, look at China. China has this system already. Uh, they have a social, uh, credit score that they're watching their people with. I have a, um, colleague who is in the camera business, not for tracking people, but for tracking inventory i- in businesses. And he was over in China, working with one of his suppliers, and he went to go catch a train to the next city. And he went to go buy a ticket, couldn't buy a ticket, couldn't use the machine, couldn't buy a ticket. He says, what's wrong? And they, they told him at the station, oh, that's because you jaywalked across the street. And because you jaywalked, the camera caught you, and it disabled your ability to buy anything. So you have to wait an hour before you can buy something, and that's what's going on in China. And so I, I did one more thing. I think it's very interesting. You know, it's Flock Cameras, um, is, is the name. I thought that was kind of humorous. I would just say beware of wolves in sheep's clothing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Napolitano, I have one more quick question. Are these a similar type of LPRs that you see like in, uh, tow trucks and recovery vehicles that are scanning license plates?
I, I guess I don't know mu- much about those ones.
Okay, my, uh, Chief is nodding yes over here. Okay, I'm trying to get it. This technology is already existing in, in our streets to some extent. Uh, wanted to draw the similarity. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Okay, Counsel, we're gonna move on to update a discussion, a possible action on the development of a brand campaign by Creative Civilization. Mr. Rappley?